Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can I have approval for the agenda?
Subpo.
And may I just make one comment? We do have one modification of the agenda this evening. Right. Which is 2.7. Staff would like to have that item deferred to our next regular budget meeting. And by that I mean March 16th. Because we have been working today on the sewer budget. And we feel that a staff report, which needs to be authored between my Deputy Director of Finance and the engineers required to explain some of the reporting issues in terms of how the budget was presented last year versus this year in actuals. We need a bit more time to bring forward a staff report to explain that to council. So with your permission. Approval of the agenda as amended? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, item carried. We'll start off with new business administration summary. Administration Department Budget Summary. Director of Administration, Pat?
Thank you. I won't go into a whole lot of detail because I'm sure everybody's probably read their budgets quite thoroughly and saw a lot of that detail. My apologies for missing the last budget meeting, so I'm not really familiar with what everybody did, but I'll try to go by what I watched on that video in my haze. So I think, thank you. I believe that one of the things that everybody was talking about though in their individual budgets was just a quick little overview on stuff that had to do with the salaries and benefits. And what else do we have in here? I'm sorry. Salary, wages, and benefits. And I just wanted to point out that 2014 was kind of an odd year for us. As the Acting Director of Finance has explained before, there were a number of anomalies that we found, a number of things that were planned but not properly pulled into the budget. And so they had to go somewhere. And so they, a lot of them fell into the administration budget. So hopefully, we won't focus on 2014 and we'll just look at 2015's forecast. And the 2015 forecast is based on, because the increase looks significant. But we did create the Director of Administration role in 2014. And 2014 only covered 10 and a half months at that new rate. And we also did a reclass of all the staff in the department. Excuse me. And I think between that and the budget list that we have for 2015, 1% in January and 1% in July, it looks like it's quite significant. But there's a couple of other factors. And some of that is that we have built in a small vacation payout because sometimes people ask for vacation pay instead of taking some of their bank vacation time. That's about $5,000. We have approximately $18,000 in there that covers overtime because a lot of administration staff have to attend a lot of night meetings. And a lot of those meetings, or all of those meetings, are at time and a half and sometimes double time. And we have a couple of additional things. And that's a contingency for the CAO position because we don't quite know yet what that may or may not be. So we need to plan for it. As well as a small, relatively small, $9,000 for acting pay for some costs that we're going to have in the interim while we're looking for a new CAO. So that brings the budget up quite significantly, but they're all costs that we really can't avoid, so unfortunately. I don't know if anybody has any questions on the salaries and budgets, or sorry, benefits? So if everybody wants to just jump into the next phase, which I think is Section 5? So there's a lot of stuff that we have under Administration that's actually the Administration Department, which is the CAO, myself, and 3.5 administrative assistants. But Administration also picks up Communications, Occupational Health and Safety, and the Bylaw Division. And then there are numerous charges that are included in there that are really, they're either related to council, or they're corporate, which are things like utilities and building maintenance and different projects like that. And city memberships, councils, I'm sorry, council memberships are separate. The city memberships and the Employee Department memberships. There's not a huge change in memberships for employees. It's actually reduced a little bit. The city memberships is up significantly, but I believe that's because we're now showing the Greater Victoria Labor Relations Association cost in there. I'm not sure if that's quite right. Andrea, do you know if that's a new addition for 2015?
Looking at your membership costs in 2015 versus last year, and the budget for 2015 is $32,000. And your actual costs last year were $30,700. So there's not a real big change there. So it is-
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, okay. That's fine.
It is comparable.
I wasn't aware it was there, so I just thought it was something that was new. So, okay, that's just fine though. I'm not going to go through every single chunk that we have in here, but it, just in my quick little notes, I was trying to group a few things together. The, one of the ones I'd heard when I listened to the budget meeting that you had last week was a discussion on employee training and conferences and conventions. So at the management meeting today, we had a little bit of a discussion about that and tried to take a bit of a closer look at some of the asks that we have. So that's something that will be changing and bringing forward as well. But for the Administration Department, there's a number of conferences that we have in there for the 11,600, which also includes an additional $2,000 this year. But that's because we removed travel and parking mileage types of things as separate budget items and just pulled them into the costs of conferences. So we're not looking for a bunch of different account costing all the time. It's all in one place. I didn't have a chance to finish chatting with the Director of Finance today, but I was looking at this one closely. And because of our current situation without a CAO, we don't have anybody going to the KAMA Conference this year, or the CAO Forum, which took place in February. And the LGMA Convention is in Prince George this year. And usually if it's off the island, we don't send our staff. So we could probably take about $3,000 out of this 11,900. So it's not a lot of money, but it all adds up. So I think things like our cellphones, our telephones, our office supplies, photocopiers, postage, BC Online, those are just costs that are really not anything that we have a lot of control over. So there's slight increases there. Staff appreciation was reduced by $13,500. It's my understanding that we only have a few people that are coming up for the five-year incremental financial recognition awards. And I'm not quite sure if that's the right name. And then it covers a few retirement gifts, but I'm not sure that we have retirement in 2015, so. Advertising was decreased. Elections, we don't have any, so that's a $30,000 reduction from last year, which is great. Our Health and Welfare budget is, has all been pulled together by our finance staff. Instead of having little pockets of health and welfare in different places, as well as all over the place in public works, we've worked with our advisor. We've identified a lot of the things that we have to pay for on a routine basis. WorkSafe BC has a lot of new and mandatory requirements that we have to pull in. And we've done that. If we were to look at some of the places we saw where we could do some cuts, all the new things that we had to add, it's only about $1,000 more in 2015 than it was in 2014. But there's also an additional thing in here I've noticed, which is the school crossing guards is falling under the Health and Welfare budget, and that's $14,000. So that's been in addition to what you saw in 2014. And Recreation Culture, I can't really speak to that very much. I'm hoping our Director of Finance might be able to address any changes in that budget.
Would you like me to right now? Okay. So the, trying to see where that is in the workbook. I do know, I was quite pleasantly surprised that perhaps to the hard work of Counselor Martin, we've actually seen a decrease in the requisition from West Shore Parks and REC. And they will actually be doing a brief presentation to council next Tuesday night at the beginning of our Grant and Aid meeting. So you can also, if you have any questions then. The library budget is up, I believe, about 5% or so. And they are also going to be doing a presentation for council's benefit next Tuesday night. So those are sort of the two really big ticket items there is the library and the West Shore Parks and REC.
Great. Thank you. So just sort of the bigger thing. Utilities is only up about $4,000. We can't control a hydro increase that we're expecting. By looking at the budget, it looks like our insurance cost for City Hall Comprehensive Liability and Errors and Emission Insurance is down about $60,000. And professional fees, we've had to put up about $25,000 because we anticipate some extra costs that will all have to do with the land assessments and PILT challenges and legal fees that are associated with that. So we need to plan accordingly. And the only other thing really is grants and honorariums. And you will have that coming up on your budget next week to talk to people looking for grant and aids, as well as honorariums, which include different fee-for-service contracts. So we haven't had those discussions yet. And we have a small, or we, I'm sorry, we reduced a contingency budget for employee relocation costs by $7,000. It's hard to say what that might cost when we find our new CAO. And the only other thing I want to touch on is Health and Welfare Safety Advisor. I understand that there was the discussion as well about we have to pay our employee, Mr. Davies. He's been seconded by the union, so we have an interim advisor right now until the end of May, full-time. Once the QP National, is it QP National? I'm sorry. Elections in April, QBBC elections, we'll know a little bit more about our permanent employee who holds that position and whether he may be seconded the rest of the year or not the rest of the year. There's no way to know that until in the spring. But one of the things that we've expressed concern about is the fact that it's not cost-neutral in order for us to have him go work there because we're still paying his vacation days and his sick days. So I've asked him to talk to the union about making this a cost-neutral proposal because we need to have somebody else here when he's not here and in addition to her wage have to pay 13% in lieu of benefits. We don't know how that's going to go, and we don't know what kind of time that might take. So one of the other strategies that we have is that we may have to look at June through December with an interim advisor who might work a 32-hour week instead of a 40-hour week. And the incumbent we have right now is open to that. So it is an option that we could look at a possible reduction there. So that's it. If anybody has any questions?
Are there any questions? There being none? Oh, Gore, go ahead.
Forecast 2015 on salaries was 659,000. In 2016, it's 622,000. Can you explain to me why there's a $30,000 decrease?
I was actually waiting to hear somebody inquire about that because I do apologize at the bottom. I know why it's there, but it's very misleading. On that summary sheet, you see Occupational Health and Safety, salaries and wages for this year, there's $138,000 and change. And then there's a recovery. This is for the incumbent who goes on the various union leaves. We recover a portion of his salary. So that $84,000 is correct for this year, but for next year, it shows as $169,000. The numbers don't appear to add up. I know there's a line there that's hidden. But I also know that that is the answer to your question as to why the 659 went down to the 622, is some of those wages are pulling into the bottom there. At the end of the day, what I'm concerned about is if we continue in this situation, if we have two people, we want to ensure that the amount of salary recovered is equal to one full-time position. Because right now, we're looking at 200 or 300 hours, which Pat has covered, that we're not being able to recover. So Counselor Martin, if you would like me to go into more detail in that later, I can. I just did not have a chance to correct that today.
That's fine. Can you also, may I continue, Chair? Budget, under council, our budget was $89,000 for council, and we, the actual was 99. And I'm confused about that, why that should be a predictable. So I'm not understanding why we're over by 10.
I agree. I don't understand either. I'm sorry. I did not put that budget together last year. It, I completely agree.
And, well, and I'm just looking at those lines. Budget for 2013 was 96. 2014, it's 89. And 2015, it's 95, which is still less than the 2013 budget.
Yep. So I'm actually going to turn that over to Shereen, who has put together a lot of the payroll and payroll costs.
Yeah, the reason for the actual is because of the payroll entry. Now that we have the new system, we're actually able to, for everybody else, put the salaries in the year that they were, actually occurred. Council's has to be moved to 2015. So as we're doing our year-end entries, that will all come out and go back down to 89 because everybody else would still be accrued in 2014. So that, that number will change for the actuals when we do our year-end adjustments.
So the year-end accrual has not been done yet for the actuals in 2014?
Correct.
So that will reduce the actual figure?
Okay. But I'm confused at 2012, 2013 budgets-
I agree.
Were, we didn't take a salary cut.
No.
So how are we down $10,000? And even 2015, we're paying less than what we paid in 2012, 2013. And there's a 2% increase per year via QP.
I cannot speak for prior year budgets. I can only speak for this year's-
No, no, I, well, I want to make sure that we're accurate.
Yeah. And I know that we have triple-checked and gone through line by line each individual counselor's-
So we're confident that 95,030 is correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Jason?
Thank you. Also, under council, we have a line other. It shows 33, almost 34,000 for 2015. Shows an actual for 2014 of 16,000. 2013 was 32,000, and 2012 was 17,000. The number seems to be rather all over the place. I was wondering where in your sheets was the amounts included under this explained?
I'm just asking staff whether they can bring up. I just realized we did not include the actual council expenses in here, I don't think, Pat. I think we've just got admin and council's a separate tab. I am pretty sure though, Counselor Knoll, that what has happened with those swings from budget to actual is, it's always a bit of a, sort of a gray area where you charge some of the conference fees versus some of the membership, or the travel costs. So that when council goes to, say, UBCM, there's fees there for registration and there's also travel expenses. And I think sometimes some of that gets charged to an administration account rather than to the council account. And it looks to me like in 2014, that may have happened. But the other thing that may have happened in council can maybe help me here is, I don't know if you did less traveling or if, say, the UBCM was closer to home, because that would make your trips quite a bit cheaper. So I don't know if, where, okay. So I wouldn't imagine there'd be big savings there then.
Well, we harpold, but there was the CAO, the mayor himself, the director of the chair. Yep. And we had one last bit of cancellation, that's why they definitely be directed to the industry.
Okay. So I would say that the reason the actuals appear to be a bit low in 2014 is I, some of that money has been charged to a different admin account. Because I know, Pat, and I, we were wrestling with this because it looked like in total that we had the right amount of money in your budget, but some of the dollars had been charged over to an admin account rather than a council account in 2014. That's why your actual is at 16,000?
For 2015, is there a breakdown of where these expenses are expected?
I may have to provide that to you at the break. I'm not sure, have you managed to bring that up there? I just don't know if we can see it. Let me go and look.
Okay, so this is one main item, and the budget here is training conferences, conventions, and fees, and the total for 2015 is $25,000. So I know there's another item down here. But what makes up the $25,000 is the QPC, and it's the biggest convention that council goes to, so there's $20,000 there. There's the Association of Bankers, and these ADICC, I believe, is 2250.
And, yes. Oh, thank you. And thank you, Michael. Workshop opportunities, 2750. So there is $25,000 there. Is there any questions on those items?
No question on those ones. Do we have that in our package?
No, you don't. And I, like I say, I can provide that later. Can we just scroll down? I think there should be a little bit more in here. Yeah. So utilities, cellphones for council, $2,200. And insurance, we pay some accidental death A D and D, 1,455. And, oh, that's interesting, we have a contingency in there. We might be able to save some money here, folks, $5,100. We had a bit of an auction at our staff meeting this morning, going through people's budgets to see who was going to give up some money. So here is your opportunity to see if you can do better than staff. What are we bid? So those numbers are adding up to 33,755, which I think is pretty close to what you've got. So we can provide that printed out later if you would like, Counselor Knoll.
No, thank you. I'm satisfied that the numbers are accurate. I'm just curious as to-
Yeah. But I'd be happy to remove a contingency.
That would be great.
Counselor Day?
Thanks. Just on that item, because you mentioned an amount for cellphones for council, I know the mayor gets some compensation for her cellphone, but I think that other amount relates to the data that used to be on the iPads. And since we've moved to not using data anymore, that probably could come out for 2015 as well.
I believe that amount has been reduced, actually. Shereen, if you can just get us back to that item. I, oops. We have definitely, see, our actual charges last year were $3,300. And because of what you're saying, I did not increase the budget because I thought we could recognize some savings there. So does every counselor have a cellphone? I wasn't sure about that. No. Just the mayor. Yeah, so.
Do you still have a?
I feel awful. Anything that someone has, has long distance on there?
Okay. So you know, for, this is something I would like to put in the minutes. Staff can look into the actual figures in that account. I just heard somebody say we're unable to get into, we can't get into that account right now. Is that right? Yeah. So we will have to get back to you. If you'd like an answer on that, we can certainly look that up. The actual was, I don't know what goes on, I agree with you, 2013, it was 3,200, and 2014, it was 3,300. And we kind of went, I don't know what to do here, so we've given you a budget of 2,200.
Yeah, and it's not a big ticket item. I just wanted to make sure we were heading in the right direction.
Any further questions? Pat?
I just wanted to mention as well, I forgot to cover this one. IT, I can't speak to. I'll have to defer that one over to the Director of Finance. But under the Occupational Health and Safety budget, there's a first aid salaries that are in there for $9,000. And I just wanted to explain that is a contract requirement. So anybody who has their first aid ticket and is on duty in the public works, they're paid all the time. So that's about $7,800 of it. And at City Hall, there's one person each month on duty, and whoever's on duty makes $100 a month. So it's $1,200 for City Hall. So I just wanted to explain why there's an extra cost right there, so.
Any further questions? In the hall?
And I was actually just going to ask about IT services. There's no forecast for the future years, but our partnership with Langford, is that included somewhere else?
Yeah, I did, actually, we covered a lot at our last meeting, but I did cover the IT section at our last meeting. And what we have done is pulled all of the IT costs out of the workbooks. And the admin department was carrying $150,000, as you can see, and it's now zero. So we've moved that over to the IT workbook. And in there, we have the cost of all our various licenses, because that's a big cost of our IT. The help desk portion that we pay Langford is about $50,000. And the licenses themselves, it's a big ticket item. It's about $75,000. And then we have put in the budget a provision for a halftime IT manager, which we also covered at the previous meeting. So we do have the money over in that separate tab. I believe it's Section 7, 7, in your workbook. And one of the bigger ticket items that we also covered last time is, I mentioned about the fact that our hardware had not been refreshed regularly. We do actually have a schedule. I kind of brought it here tonight because we try on a regular basis to replace our desktops or laptops so that we don't have to do it all at once. And it didn't happen last year. So we've actually got a budget item of about $50,000. That's two years' worth. I've had a chat with staff, and everybody, I must say, give credit to your staff, is trying hard to be fiscally prudent and going, well, if my computer's still working properly, I may not need a new one, you know, just because it's on here. But we do need to do some preventative maintenance. We can't have them all crashing all at once. So that's all in the IT workbook.
And, sorry, I just had one more. We covered this last meeting and I was asleep, but under janitorial salaries, it's 45,000, and then it goes down to 37,000 in 2015, and 38,000 next year, and 39,000. So I'm just wondering.
Yeah. And I'm going to defer to our Director of Admin on that. I don't really have too much to do with the janitorial contract. I think we got a better, better deal there.
Yeah, unfortunately, we don't know who put the payroll number in for the janitorial salaries. We do have just one Building Services worker, and we have one auxiliary worker who does come in when he's on a few days of sick leave or on his vacation. And we sometimes have overtime hours that we actually plan for because he comes in on the Christmas break and cleans carpets. Sometimes he does windows. He can't do a lot of the tile work and cleaning and polishing when staff are here. So that may be that some of the projects are related to the overtime costs associated with the after-hours work that he did. We didn't, never really know where we are with that until each year. didn't never really know where we are with that until each year comes along.
I'm just wondering, further to that, was there, was he away on a medical leave, perhaps, and we were paying for two, I just can't remember, I wasn't here-
He was on a, an extended vacation in 2014, wasn't he, didn't he take a good period of time, and the auxiliary worker-
Yeah, I think there might have been a bit of an overlap to make it higher than it usually would have been in that previous year.
Thank you. Maybe we should look at that a little bit closer then, because he works a 26-hour work week, is that correct?
Yeah. Any further questions?
Sorry, I'm trying to remember, Lohol, what was the other item that you asked about just before this, before the janitorial?
Oh, IT services.
Okay, for, yeah, that, my, what was it with IT, sorry, it'll have to come back to me.
Our Administration Director, did you want to speak to the emergency summary?
I'm going to defer that one to our Acting Director of Finance, because she was able to meet with our emergency program coordinator, so she has a little more in-depth knowledge on that budget than I do.
Okay, thank you, Andrea?
I'm just trying to, it is under your admin tab, there's kind of a separated there, it's pretty much, that's it, so, I did meet with your coordinator, your Amy, and we initially started off with an interesting budget, because it was more than double work creation here, and there had been a number of projects that had been suggested in the budget by a previous manager here, and we think also, and he was very admirable to avoid, you know, I really think we need all of that, so, you know, we did kind of get a budget back to it, and, and, a couple things for councils to review, is that we have, at the end of the day, because I always like to draw your two, sort of the bottom line here, before we get into the details, because if we can come up with only a 2% budget increase in one area, there is a 2% issue that's, so having said that, we did trim in some areas and we added in a couple, so we did, in the consultant figure, we did agree to be a bit more money to your coordinator, and add a bit for his renewal, because it was previous years of $12,000, the other items are fairly minor, you know.
It's not, sorry, thank you, a lot of these are just sort of routine items where we've, we've added some money where, you know, he needed it, but we also took it away in a number of other areas, one of the major items in this budget is the Crest levy, and I believe one of our counselors is probably much more versed on this than I am, but this is a requisition that we receive, and not really any huge increase in there, I do know that going down the road in 2017, there's a need to do, and I'm looking to you, Counselor Logan, if you want, can you speak to any other details on this, because I'm not the expert on the radios?
Yeah, the, the reason for the increase in 2017, Madam Chair, is the, when Crest moves to the new P25 platform, that will start rolling out towards the end of this year, beginning of next year, so you'll see some of the increases ramp up for that one year, and then Crest, literally, and then go, start to go down the following years.
Mm-hmm, thank you, because I, I knew there was a reason for that, and I thought some of you might be, be wondering, so the rest of these are pretty, no real big changes over last year, seeing as we did at the end get to only a 2% increase, I'm just going to have a look at what else we have, one of the items that Mr. Amy did submit was for an emergency generator, which we thought was more appropriately put over into the engineering budget, which you have seen when we went through our special projects and tangible capital assets, so it won't be reflected in here, there's a number of supplies that he has a budget for, and, what else we got? I think that's about it, because at the end, if you remove the radio portion from his budget, for 2015, the total amount is 88,700, but well over half of that, about 47, is the radio, so the rest is what you're actually paying for your emergency budget, the part that Mr. Amy actually has some control over. Thank you, any questions from council members or staff? Counselor Martin?
Actually, I don't have any questions on that, but are, are we going to have a presentation, or is somebody going to be talking about solar colwood? I was just waiting to hear it, since it's on the admin budget, I didn't want to bring it up to begin-
I hadn't planned on it, be, at a budget meeting, because the program is wrapping up at the end of March, I thought that that might be something you might want to have a presentation perhaps at a regular council meeting, because we do periodically have reports on the solar colwood project, it's whatever council's wishes are there.
Well, I guess the only question I really have to all this is, is I just need a clarification of, you know, we're showing a $218,000 expenditure in 2014, and a $90,000 expenditure in 2015, and I want to clarify that that's not actually coming from taxation, so that we don't get, I mean, that's just what it looks like right now, right, so that, that's where I'm looking for that clarification, that's, that's revenue?
Revenue, the 90,000?
No, that, no, that is expense, the, I do know that in 2014, we haven't got all of our year-end entries done, but we are expecting, I'm just trying to see the revenue side of that, because at the end of the day, it comes out that really the only cost to colwood is the GST that we cannot recover, it's, it's a sales tax item, so it's not like we're running into huge expenses there, it does definitely, in some of the budget sheets we looked at last week, it does distort things in the big budget picture, because we had a million dollars we've taken out of revenue and a million out of expenses, that was this in-kind contribution that wasn't actual cash, and we had to remove that for proper accounting presentation.
So, I'm sorry, when, when are we doing that, then, is, when, when, when are we doing a budget analysis of solar colwood, from a budget, budgetary standpoint?
I hadn't actually scheduled them for these meetings, what I was thinking we could do, because the project does wind up at the end of March, which is pretty quick, I thought that it might be appropriate to have them give you a bit of a wind-up on the project after that, because there really is no material impact on the 2015 operations in terms of the revenue less the expenses that we've been made aware of here.
Thanks, I'm just trying to get my head around that it's not revenue when it says in green revenue, and then says 90,000-
Yeah, but that's a very good point, Counselor Day, is that the revenue is on page one, at the very top, solar colwood is showing revenue of 90,575, and we are showing offsetting expenses on page two of that summary, of expenses, also of, of 90,000, like I say, my understanding is the only real cost is, there's a bit of sales tax in there, and it's really not a lot. Any further questions?
Sorry, one more.
Counselor Martin?
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, but, but, but for the record for staff, thank you, I've noticed something I'd like to have removed, it looks like the legal fees have carried forward into 2016, Megan, if you could make a note, solar colwood, $8,160 of legal fees, I think need to be removed. Okay, we can move on to the Bylaw Division, the budget, presentation from Kevin Atkinson?
Through the chair, our budget has, is pretty much remaining static this year, we've met with the Finance Department, and there's no significant increases in our training budget, our courses and seminars, that's pretty much all remaining the same, there was a small reduction in our office and printing stationery, in the past, we've purchased all the municipal tickets for Langford, CRD, the RCMP, and ourselves, and we purchase those in bulk, by buying a huge quantity, we get a great, a very big savings, and then the different municipalities and organizations reimburse us, for accounting reasons, we've lowered the, the amount, and Finance is now aware that it's money in, money out, and they're dealing with the paperwork end on their side, our uniform and clothing, that budget is, is remaining static, as same as, as last year, there's no significant increases to that budget, our fuel, we were pretty much spot-on with our fuel that we used last year, so those numbers are going to be moving forward, our general supplies, there is some equipment purchases in the forecast for 2015, and we've discussed with Finance, we're going to leave that amount in, there will be a report coming forward to council this year with those, a request for those purchases, but it will be from an existing money, it will be no new money, minor equipment supplies for graffiti, this is grant money that we usually get from BC Hydro in July, Finance is funding that line item from January onwards for the year, and knowing that the money is coming in in July, so our graffiti coordinator can actually spend money and do on projects 12 months of the year, rather than only six months in previous years, we've got our insurance for our vehicles, that's remaining static, that's not changing, our maintenance costs for our vehicles were, were pretty close to being on budget, 58 was slightly over budget this year, 38 is our scheduled vehicle maintenance, is scheduled for, to be recycled out, so we may see those maintenance fees drop in 2015, depending on if the vehicle is purchased this year for our replacement vehicle, and that is all that I have on, on those items, if there's any questions, I can answer the questions.
Thank you, is there any questions? Counselor Day?
Thank you, just a couple of little anomalies that I noticed, and maybe I missed, you may have mentioned them, and I was thinking other thoughts, but on the general expenses, your year-to-date actual at December 31st was under 10,000, but the budget is remaining for 2015 at 18,8, is, are you expecting that you, for some reason, had unusually low expenses this year?
What, where are you looking, Counselor Day?
On the first page, under your general expenses. Under general expenses, your December 31st actual was 9,982, your budget for 2014 was 19,5, and your budget for 2015 is 18,8.
I will defer to Finance on that, that's, can you answer that?
Well, I haven't really had a look here, but it looks to me like you've been running under budget, which contributes to the surplus, so, for instance, training, your budget was $3,000 in 2014, you spent 16,72, so there's, you know, $1,300 surplus, your training course fees, budgeted 1,500, you spent 900, there's another 600, and so on and so forth, I think that's kind of where it's coming from, office, there's a big contributor there, we had a $2,000 budget for office, you spent 75, so, that's kind of a bit of a theme there. Just, just was wondering also, where did I get to, on legal, legal was actually quite high, in the actual, it was 7,981 for legal expenses, and the budget was 4,500, and the forecast is, again, for 2015, for 4,500, and I'm just wondering if that was sufficient.
Counselor Day, I think you're on Public Works, not on Bylaw.
I am reading the wrong sheet.
You're giving me a heart attack, you-
Sorry!
I'm looking at numbers going, thank you for that entertainment, that was-
I'm sure it's been covered already, but there's a 46,000 dollar increase in salaries, wages, and benefits, is that because 2014 is totally out of whack again, or are we running extra shifts?
In 2014, there were a number of factors, our third officer acquired his fifth day, as well, there was a wage review for the Bylaw Officer One position, and there was a wage increase, and a title change to a Bylaw Two, there was also, for 2014, there was a new work schedule that was put into place, and we're now working seven days a week, and all the officers received a $1 wage lift, a one-time wage lift, as well as there is an increase to your benefits because of those lifts, there's also going to be a, in 2015, a 1% wage lift this January, and another 1% wage lift in July of this year. Thank you.
Just, can I ask a question, just staying on this line, that still doesn't come up with 46,000, so I don't know-
Well, I'm in a bit of an ongoing difficult position here, in that I didn't put together the 2013 or 14 budget, we did address this somewhat last week when we looked at the payrolls and salaries analysis, and one of the things that we covered is that one Bylaw officer position going from .8 to 1, and the wage reclassification added about $20,000, and the best guidance I can give council is to look at our actual costs, which is a fairly accurate indicator, so if we take the $230,000 approximately of actual, we know we've added 20,000 onto that, bringing us to 250, and then we add about, you know, a few percentage points there for some increases, that gets us to the 261,000, I suspect that when the budget was done in 2014, there wasn't money allocated perhaps, because one of the positions did go up to full-time towards the end of 2014, and that would definitely not have been in the 2014 budget. Thank you, any further questions? Counselor John?
Thank you, Chair, I'm just wondering, have we received the insurance numbers for the vehicles under Bylaw?
Yes, we have, and we are in the midst of looking at how we charge out insurance, because right now, the insurance costs have been charged largely over to the Public Works Department, and, because the fleet manager there does look after all the maintenance and insurance on our vehicles, and in some ways, it makes life a lot simpler to have the, the vehicle insurance all recorded there, and that's why you'll see in some of these, the insurance costs not coming through, but I can assure you, our vehicles are insured. Thank you. Thank you, any further questions?
Any further questions? Counselor Day?
Thanks. Just going back to the Bylaw Department for the, for the wages, I, I'm just wondering, because when we went to seven days a week, we're getting more coverage, but we were also doing that to avoid overtime costs. So I was hoping that there would be some reflection of some savings that were facilitated by the changes as well. And obviously, going from the actual of $230,000 to $262,000, there, no, doesn't seem to be any offsetting savings. So where would the overtime have shown up? Would it be in that actual?
Yes, it would.
I know this gets really confusing, and it was really confusing for us as well. Just to clarify a little bit on the, the change in the classifications and things like that, and what kind of impact that alone, it had on the three individuals through the department. If we look at the fact that we went from a four-day to a five-day, that took the one officer from 1,456 hours a year to 1,820 hours a year, which is about $14,000 in wages just for the extra day. In addition to that, last year, they submitted a reclassification, asking that their position be reviewed from a Bylaw Enforcement Officer One position to a Bylaw Enforcement Officer Two position, and that review was actually really quite delayed. It should have been done a couple of years ago, and it wasn't. So through that review, it was determined that they definitely were working at a minimum of the Level Two, not the One. So that change in the way the pay grades go, because we can't really control how much of a difference there is between one pay grade to the next pay grade, it's not 50 cents, 50 cents, 50 cents. So when you have two officers going from a one to a two, they work 1,820 hours each, so you have to calculate 3,640 hours at approximately, I, I can't recall if it was $2.50 or $3.00 an hour difference in the two pay grades. So that's another $11,000 that was added because of the reclassification. The change to the seven-day modified workweek was something we really desperately wanted. It, it isn't something you see very easily in the sense that 1,820 hours is 1,820 hours. Where we'll see the savings in 2015 as our test year, is that we now have the ability to have the officers work anytime between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM. Right now, they're still just working regular shifts. Normally, anything outside of 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM was automatically time and a half, and depending on how long they worked or how late they worked, rolled into double time. So when we went to that plan, the idea was, okay, we have the flexibility with future plan, or with long-term planning and proper notice, we can say in the summertime, we're going to have you work from 10 o'clock to 7 o'clock, or I think they work a 9.7 hour, 9.75 hour day now with their hour for lunch. We can move their shifts around a little bit, so now the city has 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM coverage, and there's no overtime at all. The initial plan was also the ability to use an auxiliary worker, but we've decided we're not even going to look at hiring one and use 2015 as a test year. And in the summertime, when we usually had some of our officers working until 9 o'clock at night, we used to pay the overtime from 4:30 till 9 o'clock at night. Well, now our overtime only needs to be from 7 o'clock to 9 o'clock at night. So that, that's where we're going to be able to demonstrate after year 2015, where you saw your overtime savings. There are still going to be some things that really aren't optional for us, that we need to have them out there a little bit later, but the overtime starts at 7 o'clock now, not 4:30. So that's what we're hoping to demonstrate for you in 2016. And the other thing was on the, going to a seven-day week, the union, you know, they want them to get something, and it's, it's much like a shift differential. So for them willing to work on the weekends, and it's not overtime anymore, each of them gets a $1 an hour wage lift to make up for that. Just, I think that's very similar to what our watch clerks at the RCMP are also getting, is this $1 an hour, because they have to work these seven-day shifts. So that's the best explanation I can give. But on those ones, that alone adds up to approximately $37,000 or $38,000, and that's just ballparking the numbers, so hopefully that helps.
Thanks, Pat. Excellent. Jason?
Just one quick question. The issue of overtime came up, and that doesn't really show anywhere in our budget figures. I was wondering if it would be possible to get a breakdown of overtime payments by department?
We would have to bring that back. I don't have it at the handy here tonight, but yes.
Thank you.
Just to clarify for the record, would you like the budget plus actual? Right? Like what we've actually been paying versus budget? Is that correct?
I guess there's, some people are banking overtime, too. That should show somewhere on the books as a deferred expense.
Yes, just to clarify on that, we do adjusting entries, and I don't know if, Shereen, you want, I know that at year-end for sure, we look at what was in the banks at the beginning of the year versus what is in the bank at the end of the year, and we make adjusting entries for that difference. And I do know, for example, very good question, because the fire department, for example, does have a fair bit of overtime because of what they do, and they hadn't been budgeting for it, and we do now have, for instance, in that department, a $50,000 item for overtime because we felt it wasn't being included in the budget. But we can certainly bring back a list of overtime that has actually been paid out by department, and you can have a look at what we've budgeted for this year. It's a good question, because in some areas, we're hoping to reduce overtime for some of these management changes that we've made. We'll get to that when we get to the RCMP department, actually, later this evening. Any further questions? There being none, we'll move on to Public Works Department and the Director of Engineering.
So the big changes in this area for 2015 is that the contingency item, which is on Page Eight, it's the last item on Page Eight, has been cut altogether. And you could say this is the final phase in the phasing out of the contingency. When I got here eight years ago, there was an enormous amount of contingency money squirreled away in various parts of the Public Works budget, the engineering budget. And this now means that there's no actual identified contingency money anywhere in our budgets. And a lot of the budgets which had contingency by virtue of being consistently over-budgeted have been cut back, so that they're more accurately reflect, reflect the average that is spent. It's in the nature of Public Works, work that it's, it can vary every year in, in certain areas, depending on the weather and what needs doing that year. There, there's a few other, I've, I've got a list of, a small list of items that could still be cut, and we may have to do that because, to offset the janitorial increase, if that janitorial number is wrong, which I think it is. Yeah. The, another major change, Page Four, the last item, is the major road repairs, which has been cut in half this year from $300,000 to $150,000. Now, we haven't been spending all of that, but that money's been going into a reserve, because basically, by not spending all of the money, we're potentially building up a backlog of maintenance work. So putting it into reserve has been a good idea, but it's a fairly healthy reserve right now, and although we see deterioration in the roads, it's not deterioration that's causing a problem to driving. The, the vast amount of gravel underneath the roads in Collwood seems to, I mean, they, they last extraordinarily long time as a structural entity. The, another change is Page Three at the top, which is the, there's a budget there, and I forget what the budget's called, but the screen, soil screener's been added to that for just the one year, $13,000. And that was added because it'll save us money in the long run. By, instead of sending material away to be turned into topsoil and getting it back, we're, we're doing it ourselves, saving on the transportation costs. That was an innovation by Ross. Generally, the general expenses are down in the budget, and the wages are up, and that's partially because the wages weren't properly budgeted last year. But overall, if you, if you go back to the year 2013, and just add 2% for 14 and 15, our 2015 budget's pretty close to that amount. So that's Public Works Number One. And if we go to Public Works Number Two, you'll see that most of those are forecast from the fuel worksheet. No human intervention in those numbers. As you can tell, because computers sometimes don't know that they've produced a ridiculous answer, so on Page 11 in the middle, there's a, there's a negative budget for maintenance, which is interesting. But it's probably because that's going to zero, and the computer, it doesn't come up with a totally accurate estimate, so it's out by $184, so, $128, sorry. Now they're here and they're there. And that pretty much deals with all of Public Works Number Two.
Thank you.
And I think Parks is next, isn't it?
Was there any questions with respect to that presentation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a question regarding the major road repairs. And if there's a plan going forward in terms of tackling some of the, some of the anticipated major road repairs, that, because of the VMP that's starting to age, so it's 12 years old, we know that it's going to require more work. There's already a dip in the, in a spot that needs to be repaired. Stormway, some of the other roads that are going to need a significant amount of attention. So I'm just looking at some predictability, I guess, in the future.
Yes, Stormway is, is one that will need a lot of attention over the years, because that's one place where we don't have any gravel, it's clay. But because it's clay, it's the one place where we, we need to get sewers in for the residents, so our plan is to try and get those sewers in next year, if the, if the area will go for a local area service, and if Council will go for a local area service as well, and, and then to pave the road after that. With the sewers being desperately needed there, it makes sense to delay any major roadwork until after that. And, and there will be enough money in the budget at that time, even, you know, there's already enough in reserve. VMP, again, has a very, very sound base, but yeah, it has a, a fairly high traffic volume, and it's growing fast, so we anticipate having to do repairs there. But I, I doubt that we'll do a complete overlay, for instance, for quite some time.
I can address the dip that I think he's talking about. The water guys have just gone through there, so they're going to have to do a major repair right in the center of one of those lanes. We're probably going to end up with almost a new road for part of that section, at least one side of the road. And where that dip is, when they go through there, we'll get them or coordinate with us to repair that at the same time. Don't know why that dips there, but we'll, we'll flatten it for now and monitor it.
No, that's awesome. And I know previously, when we've laid sewers down, especially down in the lagoon, they're quite creative in using our own gravel. And the engineer of the day was able to actually get the whole road overlaid, as opposed to just the trench work, because we were able to contribute the gravel part. So we got a lot of the lagoon actually repaved at, at very minimal expense, but yeah.
Yeah, and we, we try and do that when anybody's doing work. We've taken advantage of developers working, waterboard working, to at least, you know, get a, a half a road paved where they would have paved, you know, a quarter of it.
Any other further questions? Counselor Day?
Thanks. Just looking at the, I'm looking at Public Works One, and looking at the forecast for 2015, 1.436, a little bit of change, and that's about, not quite, $100,000 more than our actual in 2014, which was $1,322,000. And I'm just wondering if you could explain why it's more?
Well, here we go again. I'm sorry, I sound like a broken record. We, we again did cover this under our wage analysis last week.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And the issue is that there was basically no, nobody double-checked how the public work staff was being charged out to different jobs. So in other words, if you have 12 staff and they're all making $100,000, you would expect your wage budget to be 1.2 million. That would be your control. But then if you take your staff and you charge that out, which they do, to various projects, you should then go back and add up the wage costs that have been charged to each project to make sure it comes to the 1.2 million. And that did not happen last year, and I have to give our foreman over there a fair bit of credit, our supervisor, Ross, because he was laboring with a lot less budget than he needed to get the job done. And it looked to us like there was about, oh, $100,000, let me just have a look here, $100,000 at least just in wages, and then there was also benefits associated with that that he was shorted on in the budget, and that's why you see this really big increase between the budget of 2014 and the budget of 2015.
And we actually operated slightly understaffed most of the year, and that was partly an understanding that we were under budget, under budgeted.
Like you can tell there were problems. If you look at the budget figure for 2013, was 1.2 million, and then, you know, to go down to 1.17 in 2014, that makes no sense at all. You can see something was missing from the equation.
Counselor Martin?
I'm sorry, I'm still confused. I understand that you budgeted 1.1 million and your cost was 1.3 million. I get that. I get that because you miscalculated out your jobs compared to what your salaries are. But why are we going up $115,000 this year from last year's? We should know what our salaries are.
Yeah, well, we haven't had the staff increase over last year.
I, I understand, so are, so is that $115,000?
My understanding, and I'm looking at Ross', is I'm not sure if we had one position that was not completely filled last year. I know you've had some folks going on LTD, and I believe there was a position that was not fully staffed in 2014, which would make the actuals look a little lower than they should have been because of that vacancy.
Correct. We were short one person all year in 2014, but that's, still doesn't reflect with the numbers here. And that was where your correction was made, so I have to defer to Finance how that wasn't... You, you kind of explained it to me, how we had to find, fine-tune where that was.
Can't right now, honestly. I mean, we've gone through this, I think, three or four times in the office, and I don't know if Shereen has any, but we've gone through the budget. And all I can really speak to is that the 1.4 million and change we've got into 2015, we have matched that to the positions and gone through the benefits with a fine-toothed comb to ensure that that budget figure is accurate for 2015.
Any further questions? Counselor Day?
Sorry, if my call had something to add there?
I just wanted to add that staff don't generally put the wages in, the Finance Department does, and that's based on the number of full FTEs that Council has approved. So that's why, you know, exactly what, what the basis was for last year's budget is not available to you, because the staff that are still here didn't do it.
to you, because the staff that are still here didn't do it. It was, the rationale for that is lost.
Thank you. My question was really just to ask that, what I'd like to do is, is just see a listing of who's in, included in those salaries, wages and benefits, just so that we, as council, can eyeball, you know, that we're, that we're starting on a square footing moving forward from 2015. And I'm pretty sure that we are, but I think that we need to know, you know, what the implications are if we, you know, I'm sure there's acting positions, and I know we have our safety officers and all kinds of things going on that make it hard to keep track.
Well, I'm a little concerned there, because at the last meeting, mention was made that if people's names were on the different sheets, that was not appropriate. And I'm a little concerned, we're sort of getting into a bit of a personnel area that perhaps we shouldn't be straying into. If anyone else has any other comments? I don't know what your past practice is, but that isn't something that I would normally, as a Director of Finance, provide, is the detailed names. Usually the managers go through that.
We can bring the chart of employees, you know, the position names.
The positions.
Without any personal names on, yeah.
Any further questions? Counselor Martin?
So if we refer back to our last meeting, the notes to explain variances in payroll forecast analysis, we have a $441,000 variance, but nowhere in that variance does it list the public works. So, I mean, is that in addition, this 115,000? That's the last, that was the handout we got last meeting?
The worst part is, I know I've seen that today, and I'm sorry, I've gone through so many numbers, I don't have it just right immediately.
Where did that come from? Was that a handout as well?
Yeah.
It should be tab one? It should be tab one? Thank you. What was the title of that one, Jason?
That was comparing 2014 to 2015. And that was, that was, that was 2015.
Oh, yeah, yeah, got it. Thank you.
And that has 130,000 of inadvertently excluded public works salary and 27,000 of benefits associated with that mentioned. That was from last meeting?
So is this one not accurate, then? Is this one I should not be looking at?
No, I do need to have a double check on it. You know, due to the sheer workload, I can't manage to answer all of that right now. It's been fairly intense, so, yeah, you bet.
Why don't we put that together, like, a little update on this with the chart of positions from Public Works that Michael was going to work on, and then we'll know that everything's in there and what the sum total, what the impact is to the budget. And that way, I think that it does both those things.
Well, there have been no changes, so there's no impact to the budget due to staffing. It's rather that the budget was not correct last year.
Any further questions?
I wanted to stay on that just for a sec. So, sorry, what tab is Public Works again? 11? I've lost.
Tab 11, yeah.
So, sorry, if we don't have, just, the question I have, what I'm confused at, looking at Michael now, is if you're saying that we have not added any new positions, and we spent 1.322 million, why are we forecasting 1.436? I'm confused.
Well, as I say, we don't do the wages, so I can't tell you that.
All right. Okay, then I'll, all right.
I'm just, I'm looking at the live version, and things have been, Ross and I sat down yesterday, and, yeah, so it's actually 1.359. Can I zoom that in? Sure.
Is this one a forecast?
1.35. Yeah. Yeah, because we went through everything, the sewer, because they all three workbooks pulled together, so we went through them all. Yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
We can move on to Parks and Recreation now with the Director of Engineering.
Sure, yeah. Sorry, I thought Shereen was doing something there. Yeah, very little change on Parks and Recs. In recent years, there was a cul-de-sac maintenance budget added, invasive species budget, and budget added for the downtown islands, but there's been nothing added this year. And most of the budgets are very, very similar to what they were before. There's not much to report there. Just the 2% increase.
Did anybody have any questions with regard to Parks and Rec? Counselor Day?
Sorry, it's not really a question, just pointing out that I think that this is an, and I think we talked about this before, this is one of those areas that we didn't capture the staffing correctly in the last budget cycle, the same exact thing, because our budget was 3072 last year, and for 2015, we're going 3426. So I believe that that just relates to, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there's a partial year higher or some sort of an adjustment like that in there.
Sorry, is that about wages we're talking again? I can't answer that.
Yeah, that's the same, the same reason, allocating it across the board. So the salaries for public works in general will go between the Public Works 1, the Parks and Rec, and the sewer for salaries. So you'll, the increase for the missed, the missed amount. Yeah, correct, yeah.
And just for the record, our park staff are awesome, so thank them for all the great work.
Any further questions? Counselor Logan?
Thank you. Just a quick question, I guess, under street signs, and I'm assuming that's like naming, you know, bring your drive and all that jazz. We had had some discussion when the new logo rolled out that we would have a redesign of the street sign, so, and we would change out signs as they needed to be with the new logo and stuff. Do you know if that's occurred yet, or is that kind of factored in?
When you say the new logo, the very recently created one?
Yeah.
I don't recall that being discussed at the NPI. I wasn't aware that we were doing that.
Excuse me, Ross, you were at our manager's meeting this morning, actually, and this did come up for mention? Because Sandra was there, and the issue is that we do have the budget, and it is to, I believe, incorporate the change to the new logo. And that's why we had the bigger budget. Remember, Ross, you were offering to, to slice your budget?
I think it's been, the discussion was at council level, and I don't know how far it's gotten with Sandra. I don't think she's had any direction on where to go with that. I don't know if that was back with Chris, and that's where it's ended. Because right now, we're not changing any street signs that I know of, just like our regular street tabs.
Yeah, we had some discussion with the dedication of Ryder Hestal Way, I believe.
Right.
And there was a new sign that was, and then there was some discussion about the new standard and all that jazz.
About doing them all, but I think that's as far as it's gone, is the discussion. This budget is big right now for the ability to do that kind of thing, but I don't think we've had any direction lost in transit, the two different councils, or, I think Sandra might need a little bit of a push again to get back on that. I don't think she knows that that's the direction we're going.
Okay.
Yeah, that budget covers all traffic signs as well, you know, stop signs, warning signs, yeah.
Any further questions? You certainly can, if you'd like to come up and use the mic.
they have an item that was removed from there that's been captured in engineering for the dam maintenance. I don't know if that's the item.
Sorry, one of six of Parks?
Yes.
I don't see anything about dam maintenance there, but there's no.
At the top, under contracted services, under Parks' salaries, consultants, dam maintenance, engineering.
I think that's a misnamed account, because, I mean, there's nothing in it, for a good reason. There, we don't have a regular annual contracted service on the dam maintenance.
Right.
Never have.
Yeah. I don't know. I'm just reading what's on the page.
Yeah.
I think probably what happened previously was that there was a budget for one year, and it's not always clear to finance what is a single-year budget and what is a multi-year budget. And there's a tendency to just, you know, apply them to all the future years, because, probably because we haven't explained ourselves well enough.
Thank you. I'm still confused with salaries. Sorry, our actual for Parks was 307. We go to, up 2%, we go to 315, and we're budgeting 342.
There isn't an actual on that page.
There is there.
Oh, I can't read that.
Does it, what is, what is our actual on that? It said 307, correct? Yeah, it's.
If you look up on the screen now, it seems that that summary sheet, there must be a formula error, it's not pulling, it's pulling the budget into the actual line. But if, can you see this? Is it too small? Or just, just, can you see it now, or is it still too small? Sure.
I'm not sure, if we're done with Parks, I did have a comment to go back to Counselor Martin's earlier query about the payroll analysis versus the explanation on the tax lift. So two sheets were handed out at the last meeting. One of them pertained to tab two, which was your payroll analysis. And the note that I handed out explained the difference between the 2014 actual wage expense versus the 2015 budget. It was not comparing budget to budget, okay? It was comparing 2014 actual to 2015 budget. And the issue with the Public Works Department is, the problem was in the budget figures in Public Works, that the monies were not included in there. And if you look at the first page of your tab two, the payroll forecast itself, where all those numbers are, I have actually tried to do a correction to make the budgets look comparable. And there's a figure in there of 309,000. This is on the very first page of tab two. And you'll see, under salaries and wages, add 2014 budget correction, excluding core salaries. Of that 309, there is an amount in there for public works wages of 130,000 that was omitted from the budget. So we were comparing apples and oranges earlier, okay? So this is to explain why the budget was wrong, because I was trying to make it comparable, because it's really difficult. So of that 309,000, there was 179,000 and change for wages omitted in some of the other topics we've talked about. There was public works wages of 100,000 to get us 309. And down below in that same column, I had to do another adjustment on the benefits. Under benefits, there's a figure of 287,000, and that includes 39,417. Benefits were also omitted. When you omit wages, there's somewhere between 20 and 25% of the costs that aren't in the budget for benefits. And that is why you don't see the public works on the explanation comparing actual to budget. The problem was in the budget to budget figures, and that's why I've made the adjustment on that sheet.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Martin?
So if we're looking at the 2015 to 2019 financial plan that you handed out, of the 19639, which was the budget, and the actual of 17790.
Yes.
The changes that you've made, are those reflected in those numbers?
So if you see on the sheet you're talking about, there's 309,168 on that sheet, made up of the figures.
Sorry, what sheet?
This is comparing the 2014 to 2015 budgeted tax revenues.
Yep.
This was looking at the proposed tax lift of 9.2, and, you know, I was quite horrified, as you all were, trying to figure out how we got there. So I did an analysis, realizing that part of the problem is we were starting this year's budget in a hole, because all these different things had not been budgeted for. And those two figures, the 309, and just below that, 287, tie to the other sheet. That's your detail. So the payroll forecast sheet under tab two, the very first page, and then the sheet that I handed out explaining why, some of the things contributing to the 9.2% tax lift. Those figures do line up, so they're accurate. Perhaps it's something we could meet offline later, because we do have a bit more information to cover here this evening.
Perhaps it's something we could meet offline later, because we do have a bit more information to cover here this evening.
Madam Chair, I just want to say that I had quite forgotten the level of detail that we'd gone into. So, I would respectfully withdraw my request for additional information, because we actually have already had it. It's just my faulty memory banks trying to put all the pieces together.
Any further questions? Then we can carry on to the RCMP, contracted services. The Director of Finance, did you want to speak to that?
Okay, so the RCMP unfortunately was bundled in with the Department of Finance, as our Director of Administration referred to earlier in this evening. Some of the groupings are a little bit wonky. So, if you want to get some summary figures to look at the RCMP, I want you to turn to tab 15. You've got a budget summary there, and go to page two of the budget summary, under tab 15. Toward the bottom of that page, there's a heading called RCMP. And this gives us an idea of salaries and benefits for the local RCMP members, and then the general expenses. And these are some very big numbers. There's two different things going on here. There's the local RCMP budget, and I'm going to go through this line by line with you in a minute. And then there's the federal government contract, which is where we pay for the number of different officers. And all of these things included in that contract, and it's, as you can see, close to 2.7 million dollars. Big items. But I do want to talk about RCMP changes in the local salaries and benefits. So, in 2014, the actual cost, 412,759. Is everybody kind of with me on that one? The budget unfortunately was a little bit lower at 373, and I'll explain that in a minute. And the forecast this year looks like a bit of a gasp, at 515,000 and change. So, what happened? We were running a great deal of overtime in the local RCMP budget, and we were also relying heavily on casual or relief workers to come in and fill in. And you'll see a different item on that. In an effort to mitigate some of that overtime and the excessive use of casual staff, it was agreed at budget last year to add an additional position, a watch clerk. Unfortunately, that one did not make it in the budget, and it should have. And we have talked a little bit about that. So, we have now added in 82,500 dollars in total for the 2015 budget. So, when you see that number of 515,000 and change, it includes this new watch position of 82,500. Now, we had a hard time figuring out what to put in for overtime. We did meet with the detachment commander, and we've gone through it. Last year, our overtime was running at well over $40,000. The budget was only 18. That's why I say we were trying to get a handle on that. We have reduced the overtime budget to 30, and I'm very hopeful that we won't be needing it. But the issue is, there are some contractual matters, that when staff work on a stat holiday, they are paid, basically a paid day off plus double time, so it's triple time on stats, and that gets expensive in a hurry. So, we don't have a lot of control over that. That's a contractual matter. So, that, I hope, covers sort of the salary piece, because it, I'm sorry, it's a bit of a recurring theme here, trying to get the figures here correct for this year. And it looks difficult to explain when you have such big swings. So, now, if we could go back to section 14, I'd be happy to go through the budget as much as I can. Now, the first item has nothing in there, and I hope to see it remaining at nothing in there, but one thing, just a cautionary note for council, we are starting to have some discussions about Rock the Shore. And, you know, invoices are sent out for the cost of policing, which can be quite substantial. And we would be planning on doing the same thing again this year. The next item is the real big-ticket items, and this is our federal policing contract. And basically, the contract arrives and it announces, you know, what they need for new equipment. Maybe one year it's all full new body armor, the latest and greatest in police cruisers. It's quite an arbitrary process, where you don't have a lot of control over it. And this is driving a big chunk of our tax increase this year. That's why I'm going into a bit of detail here. So, you can see, we've put some notes in here to show that it's a 7 and 3/4% increase, and this is the federal contract. This is not the local contract. This is the federal one. And I, in my previous position, went to quite a few of these budget meetings with the RCMP. And it was a real eye-opener, because they would just come in and announce what they needed. There was no discussion. There was no negotiating. And to be honest, folks, they usually come fully armed and tasered and guns and nightsticks. And you're not in a real position of strength when you go to negotiate, and it's just like, this is what we need. And this is sort of for a higher power, actually, you know, to engage. This has been a common theme across the country. So, we're looking this year at about, I'm just looking, we had a budget of 2.4, so we're looking at about 190,000, almost 185,000 dollar increase there. One thing that's a bit of a saver is that sometimes we are not at our full staffing complement, which is what happened this year. You'll notice that we're a little bit under our budget, 2.352 million versus 2.4. And that difference of 56,000 or so, that actually gets added to a policing reserve that you have. And you currently have about 237,000 in there, so that reserve will increase to 290. So, there's a bit of a saver there. And I have one other piece of good news. I'm just going to skip the next item for a sec, because over the page, we used to have a regional crime unit that's at the top of page two there, and that has been disbanded. And I don't know all the details, but I can see that we've been budgeting 66,000 there. So, there is a bit of a savings there to offset the large increase in the federal contract. So, that would net out to about 120,000. So, that's a little bit better news. Couple of the other items, we do have to pay a portion of prisoner costs, those portions that are considered, sorry, prisoners that are considered to be callwoods, and that's what the prisoner billing amount is, and that can fluctuate. It's very tough to budget that. It depends on the prisoners there, and we can't really predict that. The police building operations, I was actually pleasantly surprised, coming from a municipality where we had to provide the police building and all the costs associated with it. You're actually getting an absolute bargain here at 17,000 dollars. If you have to build that building and incur the debt and keep the jail cells up to the current standards, I think we get a very good deal here. Good bang for your buck. The, oh, the reader's salary, I'm just trying to remember what that was, unless somebody else knows this.
It's like a watch clerk.
Okay.
It's cost shared.
Okay, good. The next item, though, I did want to do a bit of detail on. At the very bottom of that page, there's the RCMP relief workers. This is an item that we are trying to reduce. Now, it has been, I'm sorry, the numbers have carried to the top of the next page, but it's been running us, as you can see, in the last couple of years, 86, 89,000 dollars. And we have been perhaps a little bit cautious. We didn't reduce the budget more than 70,000, because we honestly don't know. This is one of those variables. It depends on the workload over at the detachment, and you don't know how much need there'll be for casual workers. We're hoping it goes a lot lower than the 70,000, because we haven't, you know, approved that additional position, right? So, there is hopefully some improvement there. We do pay a portion, we cost share a network administrator. That's the next line. I have got staff looking into the annual crime prevention and bike patrol, because it almost looks like we only get billed every second year or something. And we want to make sure that if there are 2014 costs for the bike patrol, that we accrue those for year end, because right now, we're showing zero. But it seems to be running pretty consistently per year, about 9,500. The community liaison for schools, that is usually something that is invoiced to you by the school district. And for whatever reason, we have kept a small amount in there. And I don't know if anyone here has any additional details.
I can just answer. The school liaison officer is actually provided to the school, I believe, through an agreement with Langford, and maybe Gordy can back me up on that one. And we've cost shared that to provide liaison services in the schools, and it's been a very effective program.
Mary Hamilton?
Another thing I have to add is, mid-January, there was a Supreme Court ruling on the ability for the RCMP to now do collective bargaining. The rules and regulations around the past way that that's been factored and figured is likely to be reviewed and restructured. And basically, a heads up, because usually when we switch horses, so to speak in that regard, there comes with increases along there as well in some form or format. So, just maybe a going-forward future, maybe not this year, but possibly.
Through the chair, if I could just ask for clarification from the mayor. Is that related to the liaison officer for schools, or is that a general comment related to the cost of the RCMP contract?
No, that's just general contract for RCMP.
I was aware.
So, that will be the big numbers that we have to be aware of.
Okay, thank you. And that basically concludes the RCMP budget review analysis. As I said, at the end of this, we did come in slightly under budget, especially on the federal contract. And that's because they were running about, almost half of a position under strength in terms of the number of officers that we pay for. So, we will be increasing that reserve by about 53,000, 55,000.
Counselor Day?
Sorry, just one last question, because there's a number of things in here, like the regional crime unit, which was disbanded, that we used to fund. But there is also the mobile youth services team, which works specifically with youth from Sook to Sydney, and is very helpful, especially with runaways and victims of abuse. And I think they're funded through the RCMP budget as a line item in their budget. I don't know if they're a line item. I just don't know if there's supposed to be a line item in our budget, or not. But just seeing the regional crime unit sitting there, I was wondering if they should. I'm pretty sure it's in the RCMP budget, but maybe a quick phone call could be made.
Is this a change, because-
No, it's been going on for years.
We obviously have never had it as a separate line item.
Yeah, it's been going on for years. It must be through the RCMP budget.
Any further questions? Then I guess we can carry on to the Finance Department, Finance summary.
Bye, George. I think it's been quite a bit about Finance Department here this evening. All righty. Now, this, I'm, we're basically just going to go through the general operating expense. I will remind you again about the salary increases we discussed last week, because there was a lot of material we covered at the last meeting. So, I'm on page two, actually. The Finance Department has a lot of other things rolled up into it, including debt, interest, and all kinds of things that we won't be getting into this evening. Page two, though, of the summary, we did talk about this briefly last week, salary and benefits. The actual in 2014 was 606. The budget, I'm not quite sure why. It was 570, but I can definitely speak to the 648,000 budget in 2015. And the main increase there is, we have to, when Deputy Director Jan goes on her mat leave, we have to top that up, her EI payments, and we also have some costs with replacing that position. We do want some overlap, as I mentioned last week, because that was a bit of a, we had some difficulties during the last maternity leave, where the person who was hired was replaced. And we didn't have a very smooth transition in terms of the folks doing that job. And we are keeping a close eye on how things are going in terms of Jen holding up. The work pressure is pretty grim right now, and I'm a little bit concerned about that. So, I want to make sure that we've got an overlap there and get somebody trained up as soon as we can. So, that's why the increase between actual and budget, and the next year, you will see that drop, because we will remove that one-time-only maternity leave costs that you see in there. Okay? So, there is a drop. Now, let me see. Our actual general expenses are fairly minimal, and we'll just turn now to the actual detailed sheets. The first item, we've actually moved that over to the admin department, as our Director of Administration has mentioned. The crossing guards sort of fit better with sort of the health and safety aspect of that section of the budget, so they're no longer there. We don't bother budgeting for interest on property refunds, you know, I see it was $4.83 last year. The next item, though, is memberships, and we do require professional credentials for a number of our positions. And there is a pretty detailed listing there of the membership fees in order for your staff to maintain those credentials. And we have probably two of our staff members who are actively pursuing both a CMA accounting designation and also a CGA designation. This year, we have taken from the admin department the fees for the LGMA membership and added them over here. So, having said all that, the other thing that we did last year that is new, is we have taken our payroll in-house. And I'm very pleased to see our staff members pursuing accreditation with the Canadian Payroll Association. When you consider that about 7 million dollars of our operating budget is wages and benefits, we really need folks who know what they're doing with our payroll. And to me, this is money well spent, and I would like to give a bit of a shout-out to Sharina and Catherine, who's not here this evening, who have taken it upon themselves to do these courses. I know we have another exam scheduled on Saturday, so, thank you. So that when those T4s are produced and the various other records that go to Revenue Canada are produced, they're accurate and they all balance. And this is no small feat. So, that's why we have these membership fees, to ensure you get professional standards among your staff. The next item, after we had our little auction this morning, we decided it was time to trim some money. So, we are getting on the trim bandwagon, and we're going to offer up $5,000 out of our training budget. We will be trimming back in a number of areas there, to go from 22 down to 17. Last year, we did underspend the budget. You'll notice the budget actually has, was 24,000. But because of some turnover in the department, there wasn't a lot of professional development happening, and so the amount that was allocated didn't get spent last year. We, I am trying very hard, as I've mentioned before, to develop our internal staff, so that when we need people to step up, we can use our staff and not have to bring in consultants, which the external ones are running about $130 an hour. So, we're trying very hard to develop that capacity. So, yeah, $5,000 off the table there. And the next item, we're sort of getting into a bit of personnel matters. The items that you see here under travel, these are normally items that would be picked up as part of your wages and benefits. And they pertain to myself. I do not receive benefits. Normally, in this position, you would be looking at about 20 to 25% on top of the salary for things like superannuation, dental, medical, extended health, long-term disability, et cetera. And these amounts you see here are a little bit less than what you would normally be paying for those benefits. And, what else have we got? A little bit there for some one-off office supplies. We keep a little bit in there for advertising, maternity leave job postings, property tax notices, and all those sort of things, various meeting notices, cell phones. cell phones. And professional fees, getting near the bottom, page five. Now, in past years, audit fees have exceeded the budget. We are hoping to stick to the budget this year of twenty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars. And we are currently completing the overhaul of our financial statements. And you may have seen Bruce Hampson in the building. He is working both on solar callwood and also on an overhaul of our financial statements so that they are in the same format as much as we can get them as our budget, so that things will roll forward in a manner where we can only use one sort of set of statements or forms for everything. And I believe we are just wrapping up that process with him this week. And that is what those monies have been earmarked for. And just rounding out the pack, literally, is the Animal and Pest Control, which is a bit of an odd combination in the Finance Department. And that is a contract that we have with them. I'm getting tired, but we can still get a bit of a, you know. That's something that we negotiate. I don't negotiate, but there it is. And that basically is the end of my presentation on the sort of day-to-day stuff with the Finance Department. Thank you. Do we have any questions? Counselor Logan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was going to ask this when we had our revenue overview. Is the revenue from the dog licenses captured?
Yes, it is. And, oh, let me just see if we've got that here. Page one of the summary sheets, we've got property taxes, other revenue. It is captured in the other revenue and contributions. I don't know, five or eight thousand dollars, not a real big number. It doesn't cover the cost of the contract in case you were trying to equate those two. Doesn't, no, okay. Any further questions? We are deferring item two point seven to the next meeting, to March tenth. So the next meeting is March tenth, Tuesday, at five thirty. Anybody want to move to adjourn the meeting? All in favor? I need some copies of the handouts.